So, thank you for joining me this morning. It looks like we have a pretty good group. I just wanted to say right at the beginning, like I said in the email, we're hoping you guys will ask questions. And this is a presentation, but of course with us, it's a little more like a conversation than your traditional presentation. And if you're not in a position because you're in a classroom or whatever where you can't unmute yourself, you're welcome to use the chat to ask questions. If you want to ask them anonymously, you can just send them to me as the host and then I can ask the question anonymously. And I think that's all the housekeeping really today. I am at the office, so the wifi shouldn't be an issue. We should be able to use cameras. But if it does become an issue, I'll just pop on and let you guys know where we're at. Okay, so let's get started this morning with our agenda. As usual, you get me for the first little bit and we're going to do a quick mindfulness moment. So we can save most of the time for today's presentation. We will be hearing from Murray Mizaros, who is one of my favorite coworkers and he's going to share some greetings with us. And then we will hear from Evian Stinson, who works at Slate Canyon Youth Center on the ETC A task overview. And then you're going to get the triple threat, as I've decided to call us this morning. Jeff Sagers from Ogden, Anne Jones from Granite and myself doing an overview of check and connect for the ETC As. And then Jennifer Gaultier from Ogden is going to come in and help us wrap up by explaining how ETC As can pass the baton to mentors. So our mindfulness moment this morning, I thought we'd just do a quick share in the chat. I'd like to know what you're thankful for, especially in fall.
I think most of you who know me know that I am one of the queens of Halloween. And so for me, of course, it's Halloween. I even have my Nightmare Before Christmas dress on today. And when I got here, I realized I didn't have any of my decorations. I was so sad. But you know, in our current state of affairs, I probably shouldn't be bringing them anyway. So, oh, coffee. Tucker, yes, absolutely. It is necessary. And Murray's not getting any wind. I agree. Every time the wind blows now, Murray, I panic. It's almost like the tremors from the earthquakes. Kitty cats. I love kitty cats. I happen to have three of those little fur, fur bergerers myself. And fall colors. I have not been out. I need to get myself up one of those canyons. I'm interested to see how holidays go this year. Trying to figure out how to zoom with my almost 90 year old grandma, so I can see her will be our family's challenge. Let's see, what else have we got? Pictures of Jeff Sagers. Murray, that's hilarious. Cheez-Its, oh, Cheez-Its are necessary. I actually have some at home because I have teenagers. Let's see, family, sweet grandson and health. Those are beautiful things to be thankful for. I think that, you know, this time of our lives has been such a frustration and negativity. It's just so nice to see some positive comments. Oh, work family. Yes, we need our work family. I am missing mine today. Nick and Julia got to go on their first site review. Well, maybe not their first, but one of their first site reviews. So they're down in Iron School District today and we so appreciate them taking care of Iron School District. All right, and let's move on to the next. So we will be, let's see, I'm going to introduce everybody and then we'll turn time over to Murray. So like I said, the triple threat is me and Jeff and Anne. We are all certified local check and connect trainers. And Anne is a mentor coordinator for Granite and Jeff is a mentor for Ogden. We will also hear from the ETC A folks, which is Murray Mizaros, the neglected and delinquent coordinator here at the State Board of Ed. Evian Stinson at Slate Canyon and Jennifer up in Ogden. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Murray. And I've got people covered up, so let me find Murray. There he is. Murray, you're still muted, sir. Let's see.
Gotcha.
There we go. Now I can hear you.
All right. Well, greetings. You beautiful and handsome people. I welcome you to this ETC A and check and connect training session. To all my good ETC A friends, it's good to see you virtually and be in your presence again. And for all my new check and connect friends, it's exciting to be in the same virtual space and in the same real time as you are. Thank you, ETC As and check and connect, check and connect friends for, for being here. This is a great day to get us together and to talk about things that are of importance to both of us, for us, pardon me. I wanted to tell you how much I appreciate working with Amanda as well as Nick and Julia in the youth and custody team. This is such a sweet treat and it's professionally empowering to meet such incredible people. As professionals, we are really quite fortunate to be in service to one of the most disenfranchised and I would say one of the more high risk populations in this country. To many of the youth who are in our care, too many of our youth, I'll put it this way, too many of our youth end up graduating into the adult penal system. Yes, much of that is due to their own choices, but some of it is due to they're not knowing any better and not having options and supports that could help them to make better choices. So we are collectively very fortunate to be at the crossroads to aid many of these youth. Thank you really from the bottom of our hearts and to the families that are impacted by your service. Thank you for the giving your best efforts to help these youth to make better choices and to acquire skills that will aid them to be more, make more positive choices and to contribute into society in a way that's very unique to them. This meeting will contain a lot of meaty contact. Please stay engaged and focused. Even if you think you know it, or you do know the stuff that's being presented, there will be some things that will be presented that may expand or probably will expand your knowledge and skills. Also, please watch out for and pay attention to those unspoken impressions and messages that will pop up during this meeting. And use them as you feel appropriate in your systems of service. So thank you for being here and this is going to be a great meeting and now I'll turn it back to you, Amanda.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Murray. All right, there we go. Got to get better at clicking my camera button. I haven't done it in so long. Okay, well, that should just lead us right into Evian's slides, which it does. Are you ready to roll?
I am.
Awesome. Okay, I will, I'm just going to turn my, well, I don't have to turn it off, but I'm going to, but I'll be here if you need me. So just taller.
Thank you, Amanda.
And then when you're ready for the next slide, you can just say next slide or whatever works for you.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. I'm also super, super excited that we have so many case managers that has joined us here today. When we first discussed how we can get our check and connect mentors and our ETC As to better coordinate and to understand each other's role so that we can help these youth really move forward. I was really excited for the suggestion that case management also join. Most of the case managers have worked with ETC As at their local place, but just as a good understanding that we have ETC As in all of the secure care facilities in the state and some of the RTCs as well. So I'm hopeful that through this experience will even have, have better contact for you case manager so that you can know directly who to reach out to. ETC A wise at the facilities that you place your students in. And always know, I, I work at Slate Canyon in Provo, but I also am the state trainer for all of the ETC As. And so if you ever have a question or a suggestion or a comment or anything to pass on to any of your ETC As, feel free to reach out directly to me as well. I will be providing a contact list. I'll send it right to April so that she can forward it out to all of the case managers so that you know who the ETC A is at each of the facilities that you place your students. Because I know we don't always place them right, like if you're, you know, if you're located in Salt Lake, you're placing them across the state. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew who to contact directly there. So anyway. The first thing that I'm going to do is just cover a little bit. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, Amanda. We're just going to cover kind of the basic tasks that the ETC As do in the facilities and as the students transition with each of the youth. So that there's a really good understanding of what is taking place pre-release, so that when the students actually enter the community, you know the things that we've gone through and helped them with while they've been with us. ETC As attend all of the staffings and all of the team meetings and all of the hearings with each youth. So right from the beginning, when the youth come into our facilities, we get to know them. We talk about the things that are best going to help them be ready to be successful in the future. And then we try and make sure that they get everything that they can educationally while they're with us so that they're ready to go into, into their future and be successful. And not just educationally as far as like academics, but also a good understanding of workplace skills that will help them and life skills, the things that they need to do moving forward. So we work with them right from the beginning of their time in our facility, clear through 90 days post-release from the facility. Right when they come in, we gather all of their documentation, their transcripts, their education information. We do a career assessment and get them on track to graduate, see what classes they need to take. And then we work really hard for credit recovery and to help them get right in line with their cohort so that they're ready to graduate. Now, obviously, a lot of our students are super, super credit deficient and so they may not actually catch up, but we do accelerate as many credits as we can so that they're as advanced as they can. We make sure that we do a pre-test and a post-test so that we can see the level gains that they make while they're with us. In the past, that's been the tape test. We're now moving into what's called the Renaissance 360 test, but it still is going to give us that same basic information. And then we also, at that point, start saying, what, what do you want in your future? Where are you hoping to go? What do you want to do? And then we start putting in place those steps that they need, whether that's additional schooling, additional training, teaching them how to job hunt and how to be successful in interviewing and creating resumes and that kind of thing. Next slide. We do work with VoC Rehab and with DWS. And we work to help them apply for that, if that's something that they're interested in. With DWS, obviously, we wait until right as they're leaving, so they have that 45 days in the community to actually get the paperwork and be applied. But we do help them with that. In each facility, in the past, we actually had DWS personnel that would come and visit with the youth, so they knew exactly what the WEOWA program was. Hopefully, we'll be able to have them back again because now it's just me kind of trying to tell them what that is. We help them, what, as they're transitioning, we help them to enroll in post-secondary options. We make sure that all of the application stuff is done. The financial aid application has been taken care of if they're going post-secondary, so that it really just is a handoff step for them to advance to the next thing. We always try really hard as ETC As to coordinate with the case managers to make sure that you're in agreement that the youth is ready to start post-secondary work. Oftentimes, it's so much with them coming out and getting adjusted that we try not to, you know, have them set up maybe too quickly or, you know, we do that application at the point that as case managers, you feel that they'll be ready to actually take on additional schooling and so forth. If they're going back to high school, we make connections with that high school and get the transcript sent. We just need to know something that'd be really helpful to us from case management specifically is when that youth actually enrolls. Because we know that they're going to enroll, we know what school they're going to, and we're prepared to do that handoff. But sometimes there's a hang up and the student doesn't actually enroll at the time that you expect them to, or they change schools or something like that. So communication to us would be really helpful to know when that youth actually enrolls so that we're ready to move on at the appropriate time with that. While they're with us, we do career research and we help them kind of establish a path that they want to follow to understand what it takes to go down three or four different careers they're interested in, what, what additional schooling they need or training and where to get that as well. We do help them register with selective services if it's appropriate for them to do that. Most of the time, we just do that through the FAFSA application if they're going post-secondary. Or we can do it directly as well. If that's helpful to case management, sometimes you just go ahead and take that and that's great with us too. Next slide. I talked a little bit, we help them, we prepare master job application and a resume with all of our youth so that they're ready to go out and actually present those. In a second, I will go over the portfolio that we actually create for every youth that leaves. And we've had a lot of success with youth being hired on the spot because they have that portfolio and they have all the documentation of the things that they're prepared to offer to a business. We help after they transition, kind of that go between, between schools or we need to be better. And that's part of the reason that we're doing this training today, handing off to check and connect mentors. So if our youth go back into high school, then we have a mentor that's right there, ready to receive them and they have kind of a little bit of information of where they're coming from and what would be most helpful to them educationally. With our portfolios, we do everything digitally as well and we keep a digital copy of that. So that if they ever lose a portion of that or they need help with it, they can just reach out to us or case managers, feel free to reach out to us as well and we can get you additional copies or whatever you need with that. Next slide. And then I think I've kind of already talked about these. Once they do leave, we do track them for up to 90 days after they leave to see how they're settling in, if they're doing well in school, what we can do to further assist them. And then we also do submit a report at the end of each school year to Murray and to the, the state who, which is then submitted to the, to the federal government for the funding that allows us to, to offer these services. And so oftentimes, that's why we're asking you specific things, case managers, like, you know, what's their employment level and did they actually attend school and how are they doing currently? So that we have that documentation for our reports as well. Before I go into the portfolio, do you have any questions for me? I know I've just kind of rambled, but I want to overview of what we do. Yeah, Murray.
Evian, Murray here. I'm going to add in there that that's not the only reason why we gather the data. We want to make sure that we're making a difference. If where we're putting our energies does not make a difference, we don't want to go there anymore. So if our energies do not yield positive outcomes on the other side, then we have to evaluate our systems to make sure that they are appropriate for the services that we want to provide. Also, as a side note, there's been a chat conversation going on. I'm not sure if you've been all watching that. I have a hard time watching chat and listening.
Yeah, I haven't been.
So, you know, that's, Evian, that's not your responsibility. Your responsibility is to focus on the presentation. You're doing an excellent job. But the sidebar conversation were twofold. And Jennifer, you want to jump into speak about vocational rehab? I'll let you do that because you're better than I. But the question was, who can the ETC As work with? The funding source for ETC A, which is the Title I Part D, which is a federal source of funds, requires that the transition services that we provide, namely through the ETC As, the, the services can only be given to students who are in state custody and not state care, state custody, state care would be foster care youth as well as youth who are in JGS, but the state custody are JGS youth. We can only service those students who are in facilities where they're typically there for 30 days or more in a calendar year. They don't have to be concurrent, not concurrent, sequential 30 days. It could be 15 days and 10 days and so forth and five. So they're in and out of the system, but in a calendar year, if their totality of their stay is 30 days, then they're eligible for our services, which normally would include DSI using, pardon me, secure care sites, RTCs and so forth. Detention sites, the kids are typically not there for 30 days, though there are some and we service them. That's my choice. If we were to be purists, those detention sites, regardless of the length of stay of students would not be allowed. So I'm taking a professional risk of allowing our ETC As to serve any youth who stay where we're focused on the youth and not on the institution. Anyways, that's, that's my choice and I believe it's the right choice. So Jennifer, do you want to speak to vocational rehab for a second?
Yeah, so they do not require an IEP to, to qualify for VoC Rehab. VoC Rehab will take just about any diagnosis of disability or learning deficits that maybe wouldn't possibly qualify them for an IEP. Or if they haven't attended, they wouldn't qualify for an IEP in that regard. So VoC Rehab is pretty, at least the people that I've worked with in the program, they've been pretty willing to look at the diagnoses that our students have and find a qualification in those. Most of the youth in secure care and residential treatment facilities are going to qualify. A lot of the JGS kids, generally speaking, are going to qualify for VoC Rehab services, so.
Thank you, Jen. I have one question for everybody and that is this. If we could have high quality transition services for foster care kids, is there a gap in services for foster care kids right now that could be, if we could fill that gap with providing a similar ETA, ETC A service for foster care kids? Is there a crying need for that?
Murray, if I can jump in real fast, I think it depends on the situation because our secure kids and our residential kids are coming from treatment facilities. I don't know that foster care kids have those same situations. And so when they transfer to a district, they should be picked up by those check and connect mentors right away from district to district.
Right. That's my opinion too, but I wanted to make sure that, that one of the points of this meeting is to analyze where we have gaps and potential redundancies. I don't think we're going to find too many redundancies and I hope we don't find any too many gaps. But if there are gaps, we need to know what those are so that we provide a seamless, continuous service and not drop kids because of lack of funding or lack of whatever.
I think there are times when we do have DCFS youth that have been in a treatment facility as well. And then that would be an appropriate situation for an ETC A to step in and help them while they're there like we do with secure care and then transition them to the check and connect mentor when they leave.
Okay, so my question still is the same. If there is a crying need for that, not just a marginal need, but if there's a crying need for that, we need to talk about that somewhere along the line. Because there is, I know of another potential funding source that we could provide some potential transition services for youth who are in foster care. I don't want to get us sidetracked in this meeting on having a deep conversation about that, but somewhere in the future, if that's a relevant conversation, let's have it.
It does look like it's probably going to be relevant. I think Blake would agree that there is a gap there and it looks like Chelsea's wondering about those people that are in group homes or in residential settings for DCFS as well, so.
Okay, well, Amanda, if there's time at the end or whenever, you know, this, I don't want to amend the agenda, but if there's something that comes along that thought just crossed my mind, as like I said, as these impressions pop into your mind, feel free to deal with them. And I want to end my conversation there, but I think it's something, if, if it's a real need, we need to look at it.
I agree. Yeah, and we can, we should have some time at the end during the Q and A. And if not, that's something maybe me and your team can put together, you know, some, some thoughts and move it forward from there. Okay. Thank you so much for jumping in and answering those questions. Let's see, so, we're still with Evian, but I need to stop sharing so she can share a portfolio.
Perfect. Okay, oh, maybe if I can.
There's lots of clicks, like it.
Oh, gosh. Sorry.
No problem.
I don't know why it's not letting me.
So sometimes you have to pick the actual file or program. Oh, there we go.
We're going, okay.
So let's get that your internet screen.
Awesome, awesome. So the first thing that I guess I'll just share really quickly is when a youth leaves, can, are you seeing my screen?
Yes, the ALTA transition information.
Okay, so when a youth leaves a secure facility, the ETC As create this document, just going over all of the things that we have worked on with the students, the things that they've reviewed as far as careers go and their Hollins Code results. Also, the master job application and the things that then maybe check and connect mentors or case managers or our transition services can kind of step in and help the student further along. So I just wanted to show you that because ETC As, I would like it to now be our standard procedure that we create this for all of our youth. We send it to the case manager and to the check and connect mentor that that youth is going to be working with. So I just wanted to make sure the ETC As have been using these. I just wanted case managers to know what it was when they were receiving it. ETC As, this is what the form looks like previous to you filling it out. And at the bottom, I have just added a little place that we can write a narrative about the youth so that the check and connectors, connect mentors have kind of an overview of, of the students and how they have, have worked with us and what their specific needs are so that the check and connect mentors are ready to jump right in and help the youth and don't have to do a lot of that discovery on their own. And then the one other thing that I just wanted to go through quickly, this is the portfolio. Case manager should be familiar with this. But I wanted you all to see what the portfolio looks like. Every youth that leaves secure care facilities leave with a portfolio that looks like this. It will have a different face depending on the facility that they've been into, been at, but I want to show you the contents that's inside as well, just so that everybody has a good understanding of what's in that portfolio and that you can expect to see that. So case managers, when the youth come out, you can know that they have these documents already prepared and you don't need to start from the beginning to help them with that. So there's the, the cover. Inside, they all have a student ID that comes with them. And everything that we've done and worked on has, is digitally with a flash drive as well. So the resume that we've created, all they have to do is go into that document on their flash drive, change a little bit of the information in order to apply for, to different specific places.
Evian, would that be available to the case managers and mentors electronically?
Would what be available?
The portfolio.
Yeah, portions of it. They're, obviously, they're not going to have the originals because we send that with the youth. But any of this we could send forward to, to you. Yeah, if you're interested in it.
Are you not, are you not creating a PDF backup copy for, for the portfolios?
Yeah, so, so we have it all digitally saved as well. Occasionally, I have sent it on to case managers. But what I found is that it's not, and case managers, you can weigh in on this, it's not super helpful for them to have all of that come, but they know where to reach out to it should they need it, should they need it. And then it's not saved in several, you know, multiple places or, you know, just so that they don't have to weed through it because oftentimes they don't need it, but occasionally they will. I would say the thing that case managers come to me most often for is a second student ID when the student has lost the one that he has or whatever. But yeah, you're, all of this, you're absolutely welcome to because it would help inform you of the things that the students have worked on and the things that they need to do once they leave that we've set up for them. So inside, there's a, this is just a write-up of everything that we've done. Information for them because even though you talk to the kids 15 times about it, they need a refresher. And so this is just information about their transcripts, the careers that we've looked at. This is setting them up for all of their college stuff that we've talked about, their financial aid, VoC Rehab, a DWS explanation of the resume and master job application and a list of all the certificates they've earned. So that's at the very beginning of the portfolio. And then we, they do a mission statement. We send a copy of their transcript. This particular student was going to Snow College and then bouncing to M A T C. And so this was information for him to finish the admissions process and have his test done. And then information about how to bounce over to M A T C. This is a copy of their FAFSA. What's it called? Where they kind of give them an estimate of what they think they'll be getting after they've applied for the FAFSA. So I just include that so they have that information and kind of know what to look forward to. A cover letter we create, we create a resume with the youth and a master job application, explain the uses of that for them. Any copies of information that we've gotten back from VoC Rehab is included in that portfolio. And then all of the certificates that they've earned while they're with us is included in that portfolio as well. And again, those originals go with them in their portfolio, but we do keep a copy of it just so that we have a backup if, if anyone needs it, or if the student, sometimes we'll reach back and say, I know I got a certificate for something specific. And so we just keep a copy of that as well. So that's just a quick overview of what's in the portfolio, but I really, really wanted case managers and check and connect mentors to understand that every youth that leaves secure care has one of these with them. So that you know that they have that reference and the more that you can say, the portfolio that was sent with you from Slate Canyon or the portfolio that you did with Jen up in Ogden, like that helps them to realize that the value of this and to make sure that it's something that they're using to further their efforts as they move forward in life as well. So any questions about that?
There is one in the chat, but they, first of all, they love it. They're impressed.
Good.
The question is, are you seeing more success with college completion?
I guess I don't, I don't fully understand. Are we seeing more success than the kids are actually enrolling or that they're actually attending and finishing an entire degree? Would be my, my question on that.
Well, and Jennifer added that not necessarily college completion, but a job attainment.
Yeah, yeah. We do have a number of students that actually go through the application process and begin college, but because we don't track them for years. because we don't track them for years, it's hard to know if they complete that or you know, a lot of times they'll get out and think they're going to and then they get busy doing something else and they don't go back to that. One thing about ETCAs, um, that we have made sure the students understand, because we work for the school district, even if they don't enroll in the ninety days that we track them and they're ready to enroll, say, a year later or two years later, they can still reach back to us as ETCAs for help in that application process. And so I have helped some youth that have been out of JJS for a while and then they're ready to go to college and they reach out to me and I help them with the application process. So that is something that we can offer as district employees, um, even after they've been terminated from JJS services.
Okay, and then there's another comment, um, so there's, even though they're not serving, or you know, ETCAs are not serving DCFS as students, they're wondering if you could train mentors to use this type of a portfolio with all seniors.
To, to create a portfolio like this for their seniors, you mean?
Yeah, I think they would like to be able to use the tool with all of the students the mentors are serving. So even if it's not something that's started by an ETC, it's something that could be started by a mentor.
Sure, I think that would be fabulous and I am happy, maybe just send it right to you, Amanda. I'm happy to send you all of the um, templates that I use for this. Um, this is the basic form that all of the ETCAs use. So it should come looking very similar to this, um, specifically like those first pages where we document the things that we've done. And I'm happy to send those masters to you and then you can send them on. Please feel free to use them. I would love to help any youth move forward and be successful in their life.
Even if a youth, even if a youth does not choose to use much of the content, the, one of the, the very subtle yet very powerful benefits of the portfolio is it wraps up in a very positive package. A lot of very positive things about that individual that he or she may not have heard very much from anybody else in his or her life. And so it's really a ego booster, it's a, and you know, it doesn't puff their heads up, but it gives them a really good sense of positive identity that they may have not here before received.
Yeah, it is really fun when you, a- after you create it, sit down and go through it so that they have a good understanding of what's in it and why it's a benefit. That they feel really proud of themselves that they've accomplished those things and you know, it's professional and it makes them just feel like, wow, I really am somebody. And that is kind of a fun thing to do.
Amanda, there's a comment or a question from Ann in the chat box. It says, could we get a list of ETCAs? So we could, on ETCs of our districts to help us learn this.
Yeah.
And I would add the following, is that ETCAs are providing services, even though they're in fixed locations such as Salt Lake, uh, Decker, uh, Pro- Provo, Ogden, Cedar City and so forth. Um, the services that are rendered are to students that literally come to these locations from all over the state. And so you, you may, I know that, uh, Amanda, you already have it posted on, um, your website, on the State, State Board of Education website, the list of the ETCAs and where they are located. So I would encourage all check and connect and all, um, case managers to note where the ETCAs are located and, um, be connected with them as, as you, as you see appropriate. Uh, because you're not going to be, like for Ogden, uh, Jennifer Gautier is here, she's not going to be only servicing the youth that are in Ogden area. She'd be servicing youth from all over the place, and so get to know everybody.
I agree, Marie, and I will, um, I will send out the actual, um, link to the directory as well as a PDF copy. So folks can just print it out and have it on hand.
And this is what the contact looks like, and for case managers, I'll send that to April so that she can send out to all of you. These are our ETCAs, which district they work in and then their information, but like Marie was just saying, you know, Jen is up in Ogden and, but she may end up placing a student in Provo. And so then she hands off to me so that we kind of have that follow-up where we're all kind of surrounding them and it would be really beneficial as well that we reach out to check and connect mentors and know who will be working with that youth and then they can report back to Jen since she's the one that placed them there.
The only change in the, um,
Yeah, I'll send out an updated one.
Yeah, Amber Edgbert used to work at the State, uh, Hospital and that situation's changing, so. Um, but otherwise, please feel free to connect with the check and connect, pardon me, with, yeah, check and connect, connect with the ETCAs and ETCAs, vice versa. Um, this is a great opportunity to do some really strong collaborative work.
And as we make changes to this, because we have new ETCAs come on board or, or change, I'll just make sure that I send it to Amanda and to April, so it's always fresh for, for all of you.
Perfect.
And just so you know, we have the best team of ETCAs ever assembled on earth.
Any additional questions? If not, I will hand it back to you, Amanda.
All right. I was playing around in the chat, multitasking is, is not my skill these days, unfortunately. So, all right, let me, let's see, so. All right, we will, actually, let me start sharing. Oh, we gotta admit some folks from the waiting room. Let's do that first. And then I will get the PowerPoint again here for us. And then Jeff, I hope you're getting ready to go on cue here because you will be up next. Let me just find the correct slide to start from. All right. And Jeff, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
I can.
Great. Good morning to everybody. This has just been like mind-blowing for me. And I'm kind of sad that I didn't know all this because I work with our ETCA here in Ogden, so. So I'm thankful for that information. Anyway, uh, good morning. Um, today I'm going to give you a very short overview of the Check and Connect Program, touching on its key components and core beliefs. Amanda, go ahead and switch slides, please.
All right. There we go.
Um, so what is Check and Connect? Check and Connect is a comprehensive intervention program developed by the Institute on Community Integration at the University of Minnesota to promote student engagement with school through relationship building, problem-solving, capacity building, and finally, persistence. Next. There we go. The Check and Connect Program consists of four components. First, mentor. Second, check. Third, connect. And fourth, family engagement. I will now briefly explain what these four components are in more detail. Next. The Check and Connect Mentor is a trained individual who is assigned to work with a student and their families. Build a relationship based on mutual trust and open communication, which focuses on the student's educational success. Mentors are a persistent source of academic motivation by never giving up on the student. Over time, the mentor becomes familiar with the student and their family and provides a continuity to their relationship process. Okay. Next slide, there we go. The check component of Check and Connect is the systematic monitoring of the level of engagement and educational progress of the student. This is done weekly by recording what is commonly referred to as the ABCs, attendance, behavior, and course progress. During this regular checking of data, we carefully watched for recognizable patterns of attendance and behaviors. We celebrate any of the student's successes, no how, no matter how small or insignificant they may seem. Also, the level and type of intervention used by the mentor is determined by this gathered data. Next. This now brings us to the third component known as connect, which is a formal meeting between the mentor and the student. In this mentoring, the check data are shared with the student and is used to create personalized interventions suited to the needs of the student. Next. Every student in the Check and Connect Program has a weekly meeting with their mentor. We refer to this as basic intervention. If, after reviewing the check data, and it is determined that a student is showing signs of being high risk, they re- then receive a supplemental intensive intervention. Next slide, please. Doctors Christensen and Sheridan define the last component, family engagement, as cooperation, coordination, and collaboration between the mentor and the family to enhance student learning opportunities, educational progress, and school success in four domains. Those being academic, social, behavioral, and emotional. Mentors work to develop the family-school partnership whereby the families become part of the educational process of their students. Next slide, thank you. Student, uh, students throughout Utah utilize Check and Connect to support youth in care and that restricts overcome challenges they may be experiencing in their environment at home, school, and community. I would like to go over some of the core beliefs of the Check and Connect Program. First, that dropping out of school is the final act of disengagement by any student. This process of disengagement occurs over a period of time. Most students don't wake up one morning and decide to drop out of school. This progression of disengagement by a student can be interrupted by assigning a caring Check and Connect Mentor. Over time, the student will then become re-engaged in their education. Another core belief of Check and Connect is that it takes time to build a trusting relationship. Some requiring much more time than others to develop. Studies show that when many disengaged students have had adults and programs come and go in their lives, this is especially true in the lives of youth in care students. Therefore, it is very important that mentors do not become one of the adults or one of these adults. Check and Connect mentors must be extremely patient and persistent when working with their students. Next. There we go. Finally, Check and Connect believes that a trusted relationship between a student and a caring mentor is fundamental. As Dr. James Comer stated, no significant learning occurs without a significant relationship. Next, thank you. The student data that a mentor collects during the check process is subsequently reported to USBE at the end of each school quarter. This is used to help recognize and address the prevention and intervention needs of our YIC and and at-risk students throughout the state. Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome, Jeff. Sorry, there's a little delay. When I click, it takes longer to advance the slide than I realized, so sorry about that.
Amanda, are you taking some questions here?
Um, let's see. I, yes, we could take some questions now, absolutely.
Jeff, my good friend of twenty-five or so years.
Try thirty, Murray. Yes.
Oh, my goodness. Time flies. Could you answer a couple of questions that, that come to my mind? This is again analyzing, I'm using the, uh, analytical the very small analytical chunk of my brain here. Wendy, Wendy, no, how do you check and connect students become identified? No, how do students become identified that check and connect serve? So how do you identify them? Number two, um, I know foster care kids that you served are JJS kids served, and how do you find out about them and when do you connect with them? And how would you differentiate between check and the connect services and what caseworkers may be doing? There could be, there could be some overlap there. So, did I make sense with my three questions?
What was the very first one?
How do you, how do you identify the usage? You're going to be certified. When do you identify them? And then how do you, what, what type of connection do you make and when is that connection made?
Okay, so, uh, for us, they're identified by, um, we receive them a- after we get a um, meeting placement request and it's gone through, uh, the YIC office. Um, and then we have the placement meeting and then they're assigned to us. So that's how we get them. Um, it might be different for other districts, uh, depending on their size. But for us, that's how they're identified. Um, then you asked about JJS.
So like Jen, so you're, you're serving in Ogden, Jen's in, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we can paint a very clear picture, uh, or an articulated picture for everybody else. So Jen is the ETC, how do you interface with Jen and how does that, how's that come to pass that she has some youth that you're, she's working with and then you receive them how and when?
So it just happens to be that Jen is my supervisor. So we do have that connection, so a- anytime I have a question, it's going through her. So we have very strong working relationship built in for us. Um, so.
Well, Jenna, are you gonna, I'm sorry, Jen, you're probably gonna cover a lot of this when you're.
I am, I am.
Never mind, sorry, I jumped ahead of the agenda, I did it again, sorry.
And then you asked about, uh, DCFS and duplication of services. Uh, if anything, we, uh, bring the whole family that our students have. And in Utah, that family is, uh, foster families, proctor parents, caseworkers, everybody together, along with the school. So we act as a liaison between all of them and getting everybody connecting with the school. Did that answer your question, Murray?
I'm done. Thank, thank you, Jeff, and I apologize for jumping ahead on you, Jen. No, it's good to hear the same message twice anyway, so thank you.
I would agree, and I also, Anne is on the call and Anne's the Granite Mentor Coordinator. Do you have any other comments you want to add? She might not be there with her computer, no worries, okay. Um, actually, that is a worry because we want Miss Anne to be. Oh, hang on just a minute, let's see.
She's unmuted, but we can't hear her.
Let's see, let's see. I agree, I can see her there and we should even be seeing.
I think it's a problem on her side.
It very well could be, um. Hang on, hang on just a moment here.
Are you watching here on the screen?
She said one minute.
One minute, okay.
Yeah.
So let's.
We're going to laptop.
Fair enough. I'm, so we could do like a quick stand and stretch break if you need to wiggle about, um. We'll just get her back in here as soon as we can.
I could sing you the hokey pokey. That would drive about fifty-five people away in immediate hurry.
Murray, crack me up. Um, I'm trying to watch the participant list, it's just bouncing up and down here, so let's see. Sorry about this delay, folks. Let's see. Was that you, Miss Anne? Let's see.
This is Marvin Blake accidentally kicking on their song for a second.
Fair enough. When you're presenting, it sure gives you a different screen than as a participant. That's kind of what I'm struggling with. So let me stop the share here and see if that helps our universe at all. Evan, you're still unmuted. I wonder, um, you don't have headphones plugged into your computer, do you? Let's see.
She just needs to talk louder.
Is that the issue, Steve? Let's see, well. Darn it, I'm not sure why we're not getting Anne. I know she had some really good comments ready to, to share with you all, so why don't I start reviewing some of the slide of the PowerPoint and then when we get her in, she can kind of take over for me because I'm just gonna bluff my way through this. So let me get back to our.
Wait, timeout, she's saying timeout.
Oh.
One minute.
All right.
Actually, I'm really good at reading lips and. Actually, I'm really good at reading lips. Anne, go ahead and just do your thing and I'll, I'll fill it in. I'm trying.
She's moving to the other computer conference room would be my guess.
Amanda, this is Larue Wade. Hi, there was a comment in the chat a little while ago that was not addressed, and I'd like it answered if you would.
Okay.
It was Chelsea Strong sent a question of how our foster youth helped when they are in group homes. And, and that was, you know, during the ETC A. I guess, the presentation. So I'm just wondering how they're helped in the group, in the group homes? Because we do have a group home up here in the Weaver County School District that we have kids in. And so we're just wondering how the ETCAs work with them at all.
I think that was part of, Amanda, I think that was part of the discussion that Murray wanted to save to the end because I think that is identifying a gap that could possibly be filled. Okay, so the, is that then my understanding that ETCAs are not serving those students now? And is that?
Yes, yes and no. It depends on the location. Any student who is in an RET, RTC, no, I'm maybe we're.
I think Murray, those are ones, so I think the ones that Larue is specifically asking about are, they are in DCFS custody. And that's.
They're not, they're not in an RTC then?
They are, but it's probably DCFS based.
I think, do not some of the RTCs have a combo of?
Some of them do.
Right. So that's why I said yes and no. In occasions, I think we're serving by mentally count correctly here, seven or eight RTCs in the state right now. And no, eight, eight or nine. Whereas wherever those students are, those RTCs immaterial of who the student body is, those students are being served DCF or JGS sourced youth, those students are being served by ETCAs. We, that, that's an area we can look at, but foster care kids unfortunately, because of the funding source that we receive in the state of Utah, and again, I know of another funding source. So my question is a genuine question because there is a potential and it, it comes with a huge pile of administrative nightmares and stuff. But if it's worth the effort, and that's why I said if there's a crying need, so I'm equating what effort is going to be required to address. I don't want to take a thousand-pound hammer to squash a fly, metaphorically speaking, obviously. So if, if there's a significant need, I'm willing to pursue another funding. It is nightmarish and challenging to get this money to the state, but it is possible if the need is sufficient. But right now, the RTCs, where those students are, again, repeat myself, where those students are in those RTCs from JGS or DCFS sourced, it's immaterial to us. We serve them equally. Now, we're not serving all RTCs in the state. If the, if the RTC is totally DCFS, DCFS based, and there are foster care kids that are in those, in those, in those sites, we are currently not servicing those, and we cannot, because of funding source, can serve those youth. Again, I want to know where those sites are, what the situation is, the quantity and the number of students, the number of sites that are served. And we will take a very serious look at this and say, okay, it's worth the energy to go, go after the money to serve those, to gather ETC services to those particular sites. And so those, you know, again, it's, it's a matter of assessing and determining what's, what best action to take.
Murray, I think the question is, those group homes are really not residential treatment centers. What happens is, in the state of Utah, there's a drastic challenge and shortage of places to place students that are in the secondary schools like that are sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So DCFS's answer is to put them into group homes. These group homes are more support groups in lieu of foster care. So they're really not residential treatment centers, but it is a huge gap out there that we're not providing services for these kids because they're kind of lost out in that, that they fall under the YIC paradigm, but they don't really fall into the residential treatment center. And so in Davis County and Ogden, there's a huge number of these group homes where there are several students living together and they're monitored by agencies. But they really aren't residential treatment centers, and they're real, they really kind of fall through the cracks many times because there's nobody advocating for them other than.
So Blake, then, then that's worthy of a conversation, a very serious conversation, and let's have it. So if anyone else wants to engage in that conversation, Blake, you and I will. And it sounds like Jen, you may want to be part of the conversation. Let's take a look at the situation, see if there's an appropriate response to that that we can make. Currently, we have the funds to do so, depending on the size of the number of staff it would be required to serve those youth, a number of sites and so forth. But it, it's definitely worth the pursuit of conversation. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can, Miss Anne, and.
Yay. I, halfway through that whole thing, I thought, why didn't I just walk over to the next office and push Tucker out of the way and taken over on his computer, right? Anyway, I apologize. I don't know what's wrong. I'm technically a little bit impaired. So. Sorry, it was probably a really easy fix, but the only thing I could think of is switch over to your laptop. So.
You did just.
We're here now. Yay.
And we are, and we had a good conversation. I just want to add, Marie, Chelsea, Chelsea is from Marie School District where Ms. Carol Anderson went. So I would encourage you to invite Carol into your conversation.
Okay, I'm gonna do this. Those who want to engage in a conversation at the end of this meeting, stay online so we can swap phone numbers and stuff like that. So let's, so that's a Blake, Larue, whoever else, let's stay online when we say goodbye to everybody else. You guys don't, you, you, ladies and gentlemen, do not disappear, stay online, and we'll, we'll formulate the next step.
Okay, that sounds good, Murray. All right, Miss Anne, you ready to go on our practice profile?
I am ready to go, and I know you're all thinking she better have something pretty significant to say after she made us wait that long. And let me just put you out of your misery now. It's not going to be that good, but it will be fun because we're all together. Before I start, though, what I want to talk about today is specifically what mentors do. And but what I really want to point out is how seamlessly this works together with ETCAs. We currently have Tucker and Trina, who's one of our check and connect mentors, working together with the girls that are in our gemstone program, and it is working fantastically. We have, even though there is some overlap in what both of these jobs do, working together from what we are seeing so far is just magical. So I am so excited and so grateful to the people that put this together today because I think when we work together as ETCAs and check and connect mentors, we're gonna see some really incredible things happen. And I know I'm getting text messages from the mentors in our district saying this is fantastic. So thanks for sharing with us, ETCAs. So what does a, a check and connect mentor do? We focus in main, three main areas. And the first area that we focus in is the academic needs of the student. So the minute that we monitor students' grades weekly or as needed. And this is really important because a lot of times with our students, when different things come into their lives, we'll see grades plummet quickly. So a mentor can be the red flag that is thrown up to the whole team when things are starting to happen. Secondly, we collect data on students' academic progress. And here's the important part of this one. We share that data with caseworkers, agencies, foster parents on a regular basis, and bring all academic data to child and family team meetings. The mentors are attending to family, child family team meetings. And with a lot of them being online now, it's really been an advantage that we can really show them through graphs and different things exactly how the students are doing. Next one, we work with foster parents to ensure students' academic needs are being met at home and that students have access to technology to be successful at school. During this COVID time, it has been a real challenge to do that. But mentors make sure not only that they have the Chromebook, but also that they have access to the internet, that they have anything, any other technology that they're going to need to be successful in school. We recently did a campus training for our mentors so that they can help the students when they run into problems. A lot of times, if they run into any kind of a barrier, it stops there. They don't know where to go to get the help. So with mentors checking in frequently, they know that that's a resource that they can use and they can help them to address any of the barriers. Any questions so far? Anybody want to jump in? Feel free. All right.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, so who do I contact to be part of these child family team meetings? They're happening. Yeah, I, I'm a mentor. So who do I contact or how do I find out when they're happening? I know that I can ask to have one, but once again, who would I contact to do that?
That's a good question. You need to contact the case manager if they're a JJS student or the caseworker, if they're a DCFS student. Just let them know your concerns and ask when you could facilitate putting a meeting together. And it's been my experience that they are very, very open to the idea of getting together for, to meet the needs of the, of the students. So.
Okay, so then I would ask them to, just to put me on their contact list for these children that I have.
Absolutely. You want to let them know who you are and that you would be very interested in bringing the educational component to all of the child and family team meetings.
Okay, now this, this is just a little bit off track, but it should be easy for you to answer. I'm up here kind of on my own. We're not really understanding the program here. Where do I find the caseworker?
Okay, whenever a student comes into our program, we should get what's called a required intake form. And this should be available for every student that is in custody of either DCFS or JJS. And on that form, it will have the name of the, the foster parents or the biological parents if they're in a trial home placement. It should have the name of the caseworker, what schools they previously attended, if they are a special ed student. It should have all the information that you need, but it's vital that you get that information. Now, if you don't know who the caseworker is, you can call the DCFS hotline. And if you want to email me or Amanda, maybe you could just push out this number. I'll get this number to Amanda, but you can call the hotline and explain to them that you're with the education system. And they will tell you the phone number and name of the caseworker so that you can go from there to get the required intake form.
Okay, great.
All right. Anne, Anne, this is Heather. I, I was just gonna jump in and say, that form goes through the registrar too. So if you're saying, well, where does the form even originate? Become friends with your registrar, and that's how, how you'll find some of that.
Okay, the registrar in our district then?
In your, in the individual high schools or elementary schools that you're working with kids. They should have that form when they register the student for.
Okay, so that would be in the individual school the child is attending. How about it in the district office? Is there a place there for it?
Not that I, not in our district, there isn't. Most of them are just held on this, in the schools.
Okay.
All right.
Anne, it's Kelly. Hey, um, a lot of times the caseworkers do not give that paper to the foster parents. So the foster parents don't give it to the school. So the school has absolutely no idea. So most of the time, my caseworkers are coming through me, and I'm giving it to the schools. So somewhere along the road, we need to make sure caseworkers are telling foster parents, you need to take this paper with you when you register or check, you know, whoever the check and connect mentor is.
I'm just so you know, for Christmas, Amanda is going to buy all of us these little cute detective hats and some little glasses and things because a lot of our job is detective work figuring out where the student came from, who their caseworker is. So if you're thinking that, gosh, all the other mentors just know this stuff, no, we're all, we're all struggling to find out this information. So.
Anne, Anne, this is Jennifer, and I think that's kind of one of the reasons why we're trying to do this today is that the ETCAs, at least for the JJS-based kids primarily, they have done a lot of that detective work for you, and they can pass that along. So.
Absolutely.
I think that's what we're trying to figure out for the DCFS youth as well. But for the JJS youth, a lot of that's been done, and you just can connect with the ETC that the youth has been working with.
And that's hugely helpful because a lot of times I can't find IEPs, transcripts, or anything. So that will be a huge help.
Okay, Anne, this is, this is Larue Wade. In the, hi, in the Weaver School District, the caseworkers actually fax over or email over the required intake form to our district office, Student Services, which is for the YIC mentors. And from there, they input everything, and then they send it on to the schools, but they also send it on to the mentors at the same time, and it has worked awfully well.
Well, that's great. You know, the thing is, is that every school district is going to do it slightly better. So again, put on your hat that Amanda is going to give you and go do that detective work and figure out where that, that form is going to be. But that form is also what is, allows you to get free lunch, fee waivers, all of that. And that's another thing that, that mentors need to do. So let's move along on this slide. We connect students with tutoring services. We're aware of their progress toward graduation. One of the biggest reasons that students drop out is because they feel like there's no plan, there's no way they can do it. So one of the things a mentor wants to do is make sure that there is a plan worked out that the student sees that they will be able to graduate, even if that entails adult ed or whatever. We want to have a plan in place and be aware of what their progress towards graduation is. And this last one, we make sure that students are receiving all the services that they're eligible for. If they have an IEP, a 504, if they have ELL services, we make sure that those services are in place. If they need those services but don't currently have them, then we can facilitate that with getting accommodations for the students as needed. All right, Amanda, do you want to head over to our next area, which is our behavior area? So this one is a little more challenging to do. I think sometimes we want to observe the student's social skills and connect them to resources to help them socially connect with others. Once a student feels like they belong in a school, the chances of them graduating are so much higher. So we need to make sure that we see, do the students have not only the academic skills, but do they have the social skills that are going to allow them to graduate? And if they don't, how can we accommodate that? We advocate with teachers to ensure that the special circumstances of our students are addressed in the classroom. And on this, we want to be really careful that we are not sharing information that we have signed a non-disclosure statement on. We, usually when you go into the child and family team meetings, we are all asked to sign a document that says that we will keep what goes on in that meeting confidential. So it's, it's an interesting line to advocate with the teachers that our children are, that our students are in special circumstances and at the same time, keep that confidentiality. We teach and model for students how to advocate for themselves. Unfortunately, we can't take all of our kids home with us and be their mommies, even though I know some of us would really like to be able to do that. So we want to teach them how to advocate for themselves. We observe trends and patterns in the students' behaviors that we will share at these child and family team meetings. If, for instance, we see, as we're watching. If, for instance, we see as we're watching the student's behavior, that every Wednesday they are having huge behavior issues at school, we may want to find out what's going on Tuesdays that's causing this. Is a different person taking them to school? Are they having visits with family? What's happening? So we want to look for these patterns and trends and make sure that we share them with the team. We intervene in crisis situations to develop solutions for immediate problems. Um, and this is another area in which I see our, working with ETCAs to be so beneficial. Um, a lot of our students, especially those coming out of facilities, are, are not very well prepared for a full, regular mainstream setting. So if we can put structures in place that will alleviate crises that could happen and then also be in tune with when crises are happening so that we can help with that. Um, monitor attendance weekly and make sure that the foster family and the caseworker are aware of concerns. And the reason we emphasize weekly here is that things can go south so quickly. And then the last one is finding patterns in missed classes or tardies. We want to not only be able to know what's going on with them, with their attendance and with all behaviors, but we want to dig down and figure out the why is it happening? What patterns are we seeing? You know, why is this student not attending math class every day? Is it because they are so far behind in math that it's just not working for them? They're totally lost? We need to find the patterns and figure out what is going on. Any comments about behavior before we move on to connection? All right, Amanda, do you want to? All right, the last one is connection or it, it's interventions that we do to help students. So we meet weekly with students, at least weekly. I know some of the mentors from our district are probably giggling when I say that because there are some students where it's more like we're meeting daily with assigned students. But when we meet with them, we want to make sure that our visits are driven by data and not just by emotion, that we are sitting down and we know exactly how many um, missing assignments they have, what classes they're missing. We have this data so that we can really address problems in addition to building that relationship that's so important. Mentors regularly and consistently interact with, support and connect with students and their parents and families. And you know, I know COVID has been a thorn in all of our sides, but one thing as mentors that we are finding is that with this COVID, that um, interaction with families has been so much improved because we become this great asset to the families of, I don't know how I'm supposed to do this canvas thing. This doesn't make any sense to me. I don't understand these grades. So I think that relationship with the student is so important, but it is so enhanced when we also have a relationship with the family and the team. Like Jeff said, when we talk about family with our students, it's usually a whole team of, um, that includes the caseworker, the guardian ad litem, the CASA worker, the counselors in the school, the foster families, sometimes the bio families. So to get that connection with all of them is so helpful. Um, mentors help parents or families learn of or observe school practices that may be interfering with the student's success. And what we mean by this is there are some of our students that, for instance, they're just lacking some resources that they need to be successful. Maybe they don't have gym clothes. Maybe they don't have clothing that they feel comfortable coming to school in. Maybe they don't have the tech. Maybe they don't have transportation. So we try to look at all of these school practices and help each one of them become something that will drive success and not drive failure for our students. The connect interventions are reported on monitoring forms. So we want to have some type of a system in each school district that monitors all of this information so that when we have the connection with these kids, we can have that data available so that we can share that and use that to help in our mentoring of the students. We teach problem solving skills and I think this goes along with the SMART goals. Um, we want to help these students realize that they can be successful. Um, we often hear stories from kids that look, no one in my family has ever graduated from high school. It's not a problem for me. I'm going to be fine. I don't see any way I can do this. So if we can give them some of these tools like problem solving and goal setting and they can see that they can be successful, then success begets small little things, then we see them become more successful in larger things. And hopefully, the end goal of this is that they will become problem solving adults with skills and they'll end up having a diploma too. Jennifer, did you want to say something? Oh, okay. I just saw your mic go off and I thought maybe you were. Anyway, um, and then the last one is that we just want to promote community engagement and school activities. So mentors try to promote extracurricular activities and that doesn't always look like a sport. Sometimes that looks like a club or anything that will make them create a connection so that they will feel like they belong there and they can be successful there. So that's all I have for everyone. I see there's a lot of stuff in chat. Uh, anything I should? Let's see.
Well, and while you, let me move on to the data slides just in the interest of time so we can circle back.
Can I just say, Michelle, you are absolutely right. A lot of times the Q folder will have the name of the caseworker and the number on it and that is a really great starting point. So yay. And uh, yeah, that looks like we're good. So there you go, Amanda.
Okay, well, I will, real quick so that we can cover the rest of this morning. Let me, one minute here. Okay, just tell a little background noise, but I think we got that fixed. So um, mentors collect data like Anne and Jeff have described on a weekly basis. And I feel like Anne pretty much went into detail on the type of data as she was reviewing the practice profile, but it is the ABCs. Um, and I think, of course, the focus being on academic and behavior data in the tracking and what is turned into the state um, at the end of each term or quarter. So this summer, we changed our templates a little bit to include some other data markers. The mentors will also be tracking which DHS agency the students are in custody of. And it's a dropdown menu, so it'll just be those four choices you see here on the slide. Uh, they will also be tracking which service provider the students are placed with. And there's a few examples on the slide there. That um, cell on the tracking sheet is not locked, so the mentors can list as many um, and, and add whatever names or details they need to in there so that we can start tracking those as well. So in addition to those two areas, the other things we added is that the mentors will track the GPA as well as the credits, both at time of intake. And then they will update that each term um, as they're turning in the caseload summaries. And we're hoping to see the positive growth in the students' GPA and credits earned um, from time of intake and as they move forward. They will also be tracking the primary interventions. This one's also a dropdown list, so they're the choices you see there on the screen. And we did that as an attempt to, um, I hate to use the word limit, but limit makes sense. Limit the data so we can really look at what the um, primary needs are statewide. Um, I, if we left it open and we got 400 different answers, it'd be hard for us to look at what's going on in that capacity. And then we'll also be having mentors track the reason for the student's exit. And that one is also a dropdown list with the options you see on the screen there. That is um, it is uh, information we need at the state, but also we're hoping will help clean up files from one district and move them to the other as students transition. So with that, I, if you have any questions about data, you're welcome to pop them in the chat to me or contact me and I will be happy to go into a little more detail, but I want to give Jennifer time to talk about passing the baton.
Um, Amanda, I think most of the stuff that I was going to talk about has been covered. I mean, we were going to talk a little bit about some of our student examples where we've transitioned a, back out into the community and had them work with the check and connect. We've had a couple of them graduate. Um, I believe in support of that idea of working with case managers or caseworkers and then transitioning youth. Essentially, we're all part of a relay team and passing on that baton, the baton essentially being the student. So we're just supporting them and helping them get from point A to point B um, along the way. So, and we went over the portfolios in depth. Evian did a great job with that. Um, we've kind of talked about who the ETCAs work with, which is a whole lot of people. Basically, I could go into detail, but it's kind of been covered. Case managers, caseworkers, therapists, care care staff, um, JJS staff in general, um, occasionally DCFS staff, so schools um, and different faculty throughout the schools. So it's kind of, I think that, I feel like the gist of what I would say has been well covered. And at this point, it might be beneficial to turn the last five minutes over to questions.
Okay.
Jen, Jen, before we do that, um, one thing that we did develop with JGS was a matrix that listed on the Y axis a, all the different assignments that are necessary to help a student to progress. Now, on the X axis, on the top of the bar, we listed all the different personnel, everything from the teacher to the parents to the check and connect to whatever, whatever, whatever down the line. Uh, we developed that a couple of years ago and I think that might be useful for everybody to know. So everyone knows who's got what job, who's primary responsible and who's secondarily responsible. Um, again, there's not much overlap between check and connect and ETCAs, but it'd be good, might be good just so people know who to contact, who's the primary contact person for whatever function may be uh, ailing in the situation. Like if you find, trying to look for a root cause to a problem, uh, you may be able to find a, a gap uh, going back to a certain situation and that person who's responsible for addressing that situation may be the person you want to contact. So you can avoid uh, 15 phone calls and get down to one phone call. Uh, that's number one. Number two, as I put in the check uh, in the chat box, I, I think there's some of the information that uh, Amanda, you and the, the check and connect mentors are collecting that now will be beneficial to our ETCAs as part of some of their follow-up information. So for example, i- if you're going to be regularly following up on the number of credits that kids have before they go to school and after they go to school, that's a gain, that's a growth. That's stuff that we're interested in as well. And it is also part of the reporting requirement that we have for the state and for the federal office. Uh, and if we don't show uh, quality work there, the feds are going to say, why are we funding you at all? And I'm not that that's, that's ever come up, but you know, let's prevent the, prevent them from asking that question by giving the good data. And so I, I think in the, in the future, one of our future conversations may be uh, you and me, particularly Amanda, and maybe others as well, um, what information you're actually collecting at, well, at what level do you collect it? If you collect it at the individual student level and you're gathering it at individual student level or if you're gathering it at the aggregated level, uh, those are two uh, separate um, conversations, but still actually, they're still part of the same conversation, but different levels of um, I don't know, I lost my thought where I was going with that anyways. But anyways, I, I think there's some uh, the baton metaphor is a great one. And in, in reality, in some ways, the baton's being handed back and forth between the two runners. So uh, this, this is a, a good situation. I'm glad we're having this conversation.
Well, and I think the end of this meeting, Murray, was to kind of help us maybe look at another meeting, which I think that matrix would be a meeting in and of itself. But also to, the last couple of questions we had were just communication, find, streamlining that, the line of communication to figure out um, who the mentors were that were assigned to the youth when they leave and just figuring out processes for exchange that information between ETCAs and check and connect mentors. So a, and that could be, like I said, another part of a, another meeting that, where we go over the matrix and that helps us kind of figure out those gaps and help, helps us figure out the line of communication a little more efficiently.
Yeah, I agree. If it's, if it's necessary, um, i- if there are no, you know, I, I, Amanda and I will have this conversation. Uh, we, Evian and this as well, and maybe you too, Jen, maybe the four of us can get it, and maybe Anne as well, uh, and Jeff Sager's. Maybe the, the, this, we don't think we need to necessarily have the whole, whatever we've got, 50 people, 47 people right now. I don't think we need 47 people in that conversation. I think a group, a smaller group of six or seven individuals could have that conversation, analyze as best as we're able to, and then if it's necessary, bring it out to the whole team. But I think we should be able to figure much of this out on our own and address it appropriately.
Yeah, we can do that for sure, Murray. And then um, you know, as far as sharing data between mentors and ETCAs, I'm just going to add the little caveat, be mindful of, of, you know, student data privacy laws. Make sure you're sending them in encrypted emails or through a secure source. Um, but you're all um, appropriate, um, I can't remember, Nick's not here to save me. Is it, I think it's education related staff um, to have access to the information on the students. And Murray, just to answer your question, is, it is at the student level that we collect all the data and then it is turned to me in encrypted uh, emails at the end of each term or the end of each quarter, depending.
You have then per term, every student's situation with regards to their academic enrollment, uh, their, pardon me, their, their, their school enrollment, where they are, what their, what classes they're enrolled in, whether they've succeeded in obtaining credit in those classes or not. Is that what you're saying on a student level basis at your level?
I have most of that. I don't have the classes that they're enrolled in. We know where the students are and then specifically we track how many Ds or Fs the student might have. And um, the weekly tracking is really where the um, more specific academic and behavior data is tracked. And let me actually correct myself because that is not turned into me. I just get the end of term summary and I can share that spreadsheet with you to give you an idea of what I do have. Um, but with COVID, I know that this particular first semester or term or quarter, whatever you guys are on, is going to be pretty messy. So we probably want to look at maybe second or third terms data. Um, just because I, I'm a little, um, well, I mean, I think the reality is there's just going to be holes in the data right now. Some districts aren't taking attendance, um, or if they are, it's in a much different capacity. Um, but we can definitely talk and I, and I do think this is a conversation we want to have just like the other about um, serving DCFS students. So we'll need to get together with Nick and Julia and, and have a conversation and then we can share back out with the mentors and the ETCAs what we were able to come up with, is, is my thinking.
No, I was also going to say, this is Evian. Um, I think that's the benefit of us knowing which check and connect mentor the youth is actually working with because then we can do a direct line to get that information. It doesn't have to go through Amanda and she doesn't have to weed through it to get to us. If I'm, if I'm in contact at the time that my student is released from Slate with Anne, that that's, she's going to be the mentor for that youth, then she and I can coordinate that information back and forth and not have it become bigger than it needs to be.
Absolutely, Evian. Thank you so much. Uh, that, that was going to be my words. You said it much more eloquently in a lot less time. Thank you.
So um, we only have one more slide, but I want to make sure I show it so that everybody has a chance. And I will send this in the follow-up email so that you don't have to feverishly write down these long website addresses. But we do have the ETCA as well as the check and connect directory posted on the YIC portion of the USB website. So I'll make sure I share that information out in the, in the post-training survey and I'll include all the mentors as well as the ETCAs. And then um, I forgot to say at the beginning of the, the session today, as usual, to get credit for participation, just shoot me an email with your name um, and your Cactus or, or Midas ID if you happen to have one. And then I can get you points on Midas for participation or send you a certificate of completion if you need one. Uh, we still have some moments here. Um, I know I can stay a little bit longer to talk. So if we have other questions, we can continue um, and do a little more Q and A here. Um, I'm going to tease and say, I guess Murray was right. We should have planned the full two hours. We were trying to squeeze uh, our time today and, and I think maybe perhaps we should have given ourselves a little longer. But this to me is very encouraging. I feel like it's um, you know, we're, we're building the road base to, to build a bridge between the ETCAs and the check and connect mentors. And I, I, I think it's um, you know, a great place to start. That we've all got information we can share with each other just to help students with success. So I'll go ahead and open it up to questions and answers now. And those of you that are able to stay with us, please do so. And um, we'll just wrap up when we get done with questions. And you're welcome to unmute your. And you're welcome to unmute yourselves or pop it in the chat if you've got anything you want to ask. We might have made everybody shy. That, or you're just tired of hearing from us? No, I'm just kidding. I'm just teasing.
I would say an overall question for ETCAs. When you have a youth that is leaving and not being placed in the district that you work in and are familiar with your check and connect mentor, who do we contact in the other districts to get the check and connector? Connector, I always call him that, check and connect mentor. So that we know what you, what, who they're working with specifically and not just the youth in custody director of that district.
So you probably actually have to contact the youth in custody director. It is up to them, or if they have a mentor coordinator like Anne and Granite, then you would contact the mentor coordinator. And on the directory, I have their role listed. So, but it's only a few districts that have mentor coordinators. It is primarily the YIC directors that would assign which mentor is assigned which student. And there are a couple of directors on here, so if they want to correct me if I'm wrong, Blake and others, you're welcome to correct me if I'm wrong.
And then at that point, ETCAs, once you've reached out to the youth in custody director and they've told you that mentor, then you can go directly between that mentor back and forth and don't need to wrap everything back through the director, just to clarify that.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that. You know, if a mentor is concerned about information, I would just, you know, counsel them to talk to their director. But again, we're all, you know, appropriate education related staff to have this information and, you know, track it for the students and work together. So when Blake says I'm not wrong, hooray.
Amanda, would you add one more? I hate to add one more assignment to your list, but would you send a message out to the check and connect coordinators or directors and youth in custody directors and notify them that periodically, ETCAs, well, maybe not so periodically, but semi-regularly, ETCAs will be contacting them for information?
Yeah.
If they're not going to be the MRP, most responsible person or most responsible party for that type of conversation, please have them indicate who that person is and have that information fed upline, then we can feed it downline to the ETCAs so we're not making 15 phone calls to find the right person.
Yes, I will. I've been making some notes that I want to ask Julia and Nick to share with the YIC directors, you know, specific to the intake forms and that, that communication around that. But I will add in here that they'll be hearing from the ETCAs as students transition. So any more questions? Again, you're welcome to unmute.
With that link that you put on there, Amanda, I am only seeing the youth in custody directors directory and the ETCA directory. I'm not seeing a separate one for check and connect mentors.
So it's, oh, weird. Oh, you know, it's on the other tab. So do you see the tabs there that say like, you want the one that says Utah mentoring?
Okay, okay. And then it's be able to walk the ETCAs through and make sure they know how to find them.
That's perfect. No, I agree. I put everything mentoring related, like the recordings of these webinars is all on there. And I'm going to start adding to that some other resources like that practice profile Anne reviewed for us this morning. We're going to get that cleaned up and, and get something posted there as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. So I really appreciate everyone's participation this morning. I'm not seeing anything new in the chat. So as Kelly's saying, she is the only mentor in Tuilla, and that's a really good point, Kelly. Thank you for making it. A lot of our smaller, I don't know if they're smaller, that's a lie because they cover large geographical areas. But some of our school districts only have one mentor. And that might be due to the student population that they're serving. Actually, it would be due to the student population they're serving. So when you look at the directory, if there's only one mentor, you can just go right to the mentor and make that communication and connection with them. If there's more than one, that's when I would suggest you talk to the director or if they've got an assigned coordinator, reach out to the coordinator to find who's, who the mentor is going to be moving forward. Okay, well, I, again, I appreciate everybody's time this morning, and I am excited to see the communication connections between these two groups grow and work with Murray on multiple things to see what else we can do to help serve students. Thank you, Evian, and Jennifer, and Jeff, and Anne, and Murray. It was a great presentation today. And like I said, this will be posted for folks who weren't able to participate live. It should be up, I'm hoping, by next week on that Utah mentoring tab. And I will send out a follow-up email, like I said, that includes all the directories and the post-training survey. So thank you so much, everybody. Have a great day.